Great, I got the signal. I will call our meeting to order at 5:10. But before seeking approval and a motion for the approval of the agenda, which is a one-item agenda, I did want to express my gratitude to the board members, but also to our administrative team. This is the second long day, right, for all of you. I know we met on Monday from 5:00 to 9:30 in a workshop that covered all other topics other than masking. And tonight, well, we've had the staff budget meeting. We will have the community budget meeting later on. In between, we've sandwiched this one. I know that was a last-minute change. I appreciate you taking the time out of your day to have another, what is probably another three- or four-hour evening of meetings. So, thank you. Just want to express my gratitude to you all for that. And Brett, and Tanya, Doug, and Matt as well, because I know you spend the same amount of time with us in all those meetings. With that, though, a motion to approve the agenda. Brian, thank you. Second, Mary Caitlin, any changes to our one-item agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing, hearing, none, 7-0. So that will bring us to this masking policy discussion. Why tonight? I guess several reasons. I mean, we met just, has it been a little over a week ago, right, when we had the confusion associated with the Supreme Court out of Long Island? And then the stay. We had the governor speaking today, which I'm not sure if that cleared up issues, or if it, or what it did, but it's a dynamic, and, you know, there's a political side to it, there's medical side to it. When higher-level governments, I think, as I've expressed, when the higher levels of government no longer are controlling, right now, they are the controlling authority with the mandate, but when they're not, do we have a policy that will work for us as a community? It was interesting, and thank you, you know, we were getting lots of emails, as well as links and articles, doing our best, at least I am, I think everybody is, because we're commenting on the different things that are said. But Marty, one you sent this morning, had an interesting line that despite, that one of the things that we've tried to do is we want to keep our schools open as much as possible, and it's not just keep them open, to keep the students in the schools. And regardless of whether COVID has been a mild event to the youth, if they get COVID, they're quarantined. So that means they're in and out of school. So minimizing any quarantine, and we've been able to do that with PCR testing. Appreciate you leading such a cause, and I know that's been voluntary, but it's been amazing the demand, the number of people that show up each time. I think we've consistently had to close early because the demand has outpaced or filled up, taken up all the supplies that we've had, so families have been very interested to indeed keep their own students in school. Obviously, it's a high priority, and we've seen that. And then we've had the test-to-stay activity that also was as clear as mud when put out there in terms of guidance, but the administration, thank you for trying to manage it so well so we can keep children in the schools where we want them. So, all of that just brings us to masking policy. We're breaking up our discussion tonight into three sections overall. The first section is to review, and thank you, Brett, for putting up there, our masking survey results. So we put that out, was it last Thursday night? And through Monday, I believe, and so we wanted to review that. We have seen some preliminary numbers, but this is a summary. The second part will be going over feedback we received from medical professionals who advised the board. And then the third part is what are those elements in the policy that we want to have in there, and then turn it over to our policy committee to try and rewrite and do what they do best in the policy committee. And get all that done, if we can, sometime before higher levels of government relinquish that control down to local authorities so that we have a good governing policy at that time. With that said, then, we will go to what you show up here, staff results. I will admit, as I read through all these, it has changed a little bit. Last I saw, it was about 65, now 63.2 for the staff results, and we'll look at the parent guardian results here shortly. As I was reading each of the comments, especially those associated with the "no," they wouldn't support a masking optional, realize perhaps we didn't have a question, or if we didn't ask you well enough, or, in my opinion, by the way, that's nothing against the survey. Are there any things that could be done that would change a "no" to a "yes," potentially, right? Are there ways to target the concerns that were listed there? One that stuck out to me, at least, was from the parent's side, for example, is if there's no masking in school, I can't send my child to school, I'm immunocompromised. And so, that's, you know, we want students in school, but if we were able to accommodate in such a way, would that parent feel differently? No. And I don't have an answer, obviously. I didn't get the chance to talk, I don't know who said that, and what student it is. Or are there other things that can be done, right? The flexibility within the policy. We do this with allergies, for example, right? That if there's a nut allergy, we have restrictions within that specific classroom. Are we able to do certain things also within classrooms where there may be an immunocompromised child? So, just throwing out ideas at this point, but Brett, do you want to, is there anything you want to highlight for us here on the staff results?
Yeah, I think, you know, we have close to 1,200 staff members. We had a response of 772 staff members. We were able to filter based upon our great skills of our technology team. Dan Kuestek really helped organize this survey. So we were able to take the, if somebody took multiple surveys or changed answers, we took their latest and last response. So, kudos to the team to organize this information. So, you know, we have a good pulse on how our staff is feeling, and, you know, hard and fast data, 63% are in support of a masking optional policy, 36.8 are not in support of a masking policy. But, you know, we dug down a little bit deeper, right? And so even though it says 63%, we said, what conditions would we need, right, to help you feel comfortable? And, you know, some said, absolutely, I'm not ready. 301 of that number said, no way, I'm not ready. But-
That's the other way. They're already ready.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm reading it wrong. It's been a long day. Sorry, yes, I'm not, I'm ready to support, that's the "no" one. But, lower county infection rates important, lower infection rate in Fairport Central School District, you could see the numbers associated with that. So, that 63%, the way that we're interpreting this and understanding that is, you know, these are things that our staff is saying that they're looking to have as we move forward. And those of you who listened to Governor Hochul this afternoon, or early, or late morning, excuse me, it paralleled, you know, we'll talk a little bit about what we learned from that address, but, you know, having access to home tests, having access to KN-95 masks, importance of understanding the infection rates, hospitalization rates. As we learn more about those, the comfort level with staff increased. So, initially, right off the bat, it was 63%, but if we dug deeper and tallied this further, that 63% would increase based upon what staff was interested in getting to become comfortable. The people who said "no," there were 125 who said, right off the bat, there's nothing you could do to make me, you know, consider masking at this point in time, for their good reasons. We know that, just like in our community, just like our children, just like some of the adults, there's staff who have unique, either personal needs or family needs, on why masking continues to be important and a priority for them. And again, but they said a lower infection rate is important for them to understand. Fairport Central School District's infection rate, which I can get to in a little bit as well, we could see how that's progressed and changed over time, just like it reflects what's happening in Monroe County, ours has significantly decreased here in Fairport Central Schools. Staff is interested in making sure that hospitalization rates are continuing to trend in the right direction. Access to home kits, COVID testing opportunities, KN-95 masks, and of course, vaccination rate is always important because we know what the benefits of the vaccination does. Any thoughts on just the staff at this point in time before I transition to the family piece, or do you want to just have me keep going? So, okay, I'll keep going. Please feel free to interrupt me if you have a question or you need clarification. But, the family results, again, just like our community does, like 3,100 of our families responded, right? We had 3,100 responses, so we have a good pulse, it's an outstanding return rate. Statisticians, those who give surveys are always impressed. 65% are in support of optional masking policy, 34.6% are not ready. But again, we asked the same questions. For those who said "yes," again, 1,300 immediately responded, we're already in support of this, we're ready to move on.
Brett, just real quick, these are responses that came through the Student School Tool Portal invitation?
Correct.
Not just the general web?
Yeah, we needed to keep it contained within our school community, our families, our kids, those are the ones who access our schools. So, we have the portal that helps us manage it. And again, this was the same, if families had multiple responses, we were able to filter the responses accordingly to get their most updated, because people did flip-flop, which is okay. And then it shows like the range of needs and interest on this particular topic. But, again, these are other factors that take this 65% that would increase that 65% to a greater percentage when we look at the lower county infection rate. Like, is it continue to trend down? 473 people said that makes a difference, right? Springtime, by spring break, when windows can be opened and students can go outside, experience the day differently by the fresh air, that also increased our community's comfort level with the masking optional policy. The infection rate, access to home test kits, lower hospitalization rates were all factors, including access to KN-95 masks, that made people feel comfortable, resoundingly with the fact that as we progress and if things continue to trend in the right direction, comfort levels with masking and the masking policy increased. And those who said "no," there are some people, again, on both sides of this conversation, voices need to be heard. And people are, in some cases, are just not ready, and we respect that, and we need to work through those details as we move forward. But as we go through the "no's," those factors that I previously mentioned, that are aligned with what Governor Hochul said this afternoon, and how do we move forward? How do we, you know, get this off-ramp? How do we plan to support our families and our staff? The more mitigation factors, or the more variables that they had access to, or the information to these variables, from masking to vaccination rates to infection rates, made a difference in their comfort level. And again, I'm not going to go through every one of these statements, and Peter, you said you were looking through them. We're going to make this survey in its entirety accessible to the community, so people can really dig down if they choose to. You know, these were tallied, there's been an increase in some of these numbers because there was still an open window, so as of Monday, the comments grew a little bit more, but mandatory vaccination should be a condition, I mean, people really believe in the vaccination. Respondents talked to the importance of masking and lower infection rates, continuing to collaborate and listen to medical experts, and the numbers are right there, sort of quantified with the common trends. Any thoughts or comments about that?
Overall, in terms of what I was looking at, and just even in the summary, but I'm glad it will be made available, I mean, we've had the raw, right, to read the comments one by one, but they were clearly able to be grouped like this. But going back to the red and green, between the staff and the community, at least large consistency in terms of the top four or five, and same with the "no's," the top four and five were generally consistent, maybe a little bit ordered, slightly different, but not really that much different. So, consistency in terms of how people feel on the issue.
And I like that you kind of highlighted that there were things that could be done, or adjustments that would change those percentages of, as well, and really thinking about what can be put in place so that everybody is at a comfort level, and it's not versus, one versus the other. So, I really think trying to be proactive and looking at what we can do in terms of mitigating strategies, instead of being very flustered and passionate, how can we work together and, you know, make sure that everybody is comfortable so that we can move forward, because I will let you talk about this, too.
Well, I mean, feel free to jump in. People were listening to it as well, but, you know, I think we have clarity, and there was a superintendent's meeting, not all superintendents were attending, but in essence, what the governor spoke to today was referenced yesterday with all the different constituents that she mentioned, but we're needing an off-ramp. You just can't go from, you know, start to finish immediately. So this is going to give us time using the midwinter break, you know, people will be in airports, families will be traveling, and we have access to COVID testing kits, asking families to continue to test before they return to school, then on the third or fourth day, as the governor mentioned, test again, and we'll know exactly where we are by then, right? And I think, you know, the metrics continuing to decline, the factors that we've been mentioning and talking about look favorable, and by early March, we should have a decision, a clear pathway. And I think, again, this is smart and prudent, because no matter where you sit on this topic, it's going to take time to transition, right? In order for us to get masks for those who want to continue to mask, and to do it in a way that they feel comfortable doing it and not have to worry about, you know, being judged or ridiculed, we need to organize and start sharing messages and expectations around that, to get tests, to get KN-95 masks. We need time to organize for the next phase of this, this journey that we've been on.
So Brett, when Governor Hochul says that they're drafting proposed guidelines now, working with medical and education partners, to what degree do you believe that they'll define those guidelines, those off-ramp guidelines for districts, and hand those down to us, or they'll give us guidelines and we'll develop our own strategies that adhere to the guidelines?
I think, as she stated clearly, empowering local decisions. And I think the roadmap that they're going to give us, they're going to speak to, you know, the positivity rates, the access to COVID-19 masks, to more testing clinics, making sure that, you know, the standard was 80% or greater for a vaccination rate. And right now, I know that the data from two weeks ago, you know, I think that's only going to improve, where we were at 83%, and I know that there were one-shot doses in there, but that's going to increase if families continue to get that. So we're really positioning ourselves and planning for the next phase, and in order for us to do that, to do this in a seamless way, a safe way, a comfortable way, that off-ramp, I think, is reasonable. So I think it's going to give us some guidelines and a framework to work with them. That's the goal and hope.
Brett, you said that was 83% vax rate among students, or?
So, amongst our students, when we take a look at our sixth grade through 12th grade, right, we're at 90%. When you throw our kindergarteners up to fifth grade, our overall rate goes to 83%, right?
And is that, I'm sorry to interrupt, is that up to date, or one dose, or?
That was one dose, and that was two weeks ago. And as we know, that as you move through, you know, the vaccination process, you know, those get confirmed to two doses, and, but we're all, we're on the right track. We are, I mean, I don't think it's a race, but it's worth noting that, you know, we are in the top, top number, or within Monroe County, top three, actually, of vaccination status, which again, speaks to our community's engagement.
If I may just throw out, just to kind of, I think, remind all of us in the room how quickly and fluid a situation this has been. So I hope I read the numbers correctly, please let me have read the numbers correctly. But I looked at the numbers for Tuesday on the New York State Dashboard, and Monroe County was at 6.3% seven-day positivity rate in a 31.57-day cases per 100K. Those are the main metrics that are used. At our last meeting, when we had our last workshop less than two weeks ago, so not even two weeks ago, the numbers were 10.9% and 72.8%, and the numbers have just been dropping. So, I think it's awesome. Our numbers are trending in the right way, and that's how much it has changed from the last, in less than two weeks. Tony White, I know Brett, you've got the numbers for within the district. And, yeah, I just, I just hope that that governor's guidance that we get, you know, does actually spell out, you know, right now, we are both in what's considered moderate transmission. There's low, moderate, what's the S-word?
Substantial.
Substantial, thank you all. Thank you all, let's forget that one. And high. We were in high less than two weeks ago, and now we're in moderate, so awesome. That is so great. I thought we were in moderate.
Maybe that's dated.
We're, yeah, okay. Gotcha. So, I don't know, you know, does that look like we should be in low transmission rate? Does that look like, you know, that's what, and I think I want to stress, my colleagues on the board who have been doing this a lot longer than me, especially Erica, Marty, and Joyce, they have been advocating at the state level for guidelines, for metrics, throughout this whole pandemic. And ever since I was appointed to the board, this is what we've been asking the governor for, this is what we've been asking the Department of Health and State Ed for, and all of the governmental agencies in the state, is guidance. Help us, you know, you're sick of hearing the phrase "off-ramp," we're probably going to be sick of saying it soon, but help us fill what that off-ramp is supposed to look like. And hopefully, that guidance that Governor Hochul talked about today is useful and gives us what we need to start doing this.
Well, and I think if she does give more options at the local level, doing this and looking at all the information we've been gathering and doing the survey is going to help us move forward, so that, again, if things change fast, as we know they keep doing, we'll be able to make that switch sooner than later, so that everybody is comfortable. I think we've reiterated many times that we do not want kids in masks forever, but we need to do it in a way that everybody is comfortable and safe, and that is our goal, so.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so just a couple of questions, I think, for us considering. I think we're all very excited to be moving forward, and I'm very hopeful that Governor Hochul is going to provide kind of the metrics, and that as we continue trending down, we get into a low transmission, and we can have our kids, I don't know if we can even call it normal, but more of a sense of normal. Just some questions I think we need to consider, and I don't think we'll answer this tonight, but these are ones that came up as I was reading the individual comments on the survey. I think the quarantine guidelines are going to be a key one. Right now, our kids don't have to quarantine if they're exposed in school because they've been wearing their mask, if I'm correct?
If they're vaccinated.
If they're vaccinated. So, you know, if a kid's now exposed without a mask, what is that going to look like for our families and our kid? Are they going to be out for the five to 10 days? Our family's now going to be out of work? I think that's going to be a big question that we're going to have to answer.
You know, I just have a comment to that, and I, it's a "yes," and it's becoming more challenging to identify because contact tracing is no longer occurring. And that's where, you know, we're going to rely on our systems and that social contract that we've been talking about, making sure that people are accountable and responsible to reporting, and making sure that they're following through on those quarantine guidelines, which we communicate out.
Another thing, a question that came up, and particularly in the staff answers, is who's going to be enforcing? So, say I want my middle schooler, or my high schooler, or my elementary schooler to wear their mask as a parent, I want them to continue masking. Are we now putting the burden on our faculty and staff? And I worry about that becoming a confrontational situation. If somebody says, hey, you know, Nick, your mom emailed and said she wants you in a mask, and Nick does not want to wear a mask that day because his friends aren't wearing a mask, are we setting up for potential confrontations? And how do we restore and, you know, respect the family's wishes while understanding that the teachers can't be?
Yeah, I would think that would be a family situation. I mean, I have three kids, I would, you know, I would probably direct it back to the family. I don't think that our staff would be able to do that.
Yeah, that's my concern. I don't want staff to have to take on that role and-
So, I think, let's face it, we know we have staff that have unique health needs. We know that we have children that have unique health needs. There might be situations where a classroom will be a mandatory masking zone, or there may be a situation where, you know, we need to make alternative arrangements to support a family or a unique circumstance, no different than we ever do, but we will be setting expectations. Like I said, for the next couple of weeks, we'll have a team together to take a look at, this is how we treat each other. This is the expectations if and when somebody is in a situation where they require masking without, without making it a thing, right? That's not saying that it's not going to happen, but I think that we need to be ready and prepared, and that speaks to, again, why we need this time to transition. The one piece up there that I want to mention is the global trends. I think that's smart, to put up, you know, for the next two weeks, reviewing global trends. I know that, you know, people have an eye on Europe and getting a sense of what happens there, and that usually has been transferring over to the states. So, you know, just, that's wise in helping us have an indicator on how we're going to proceed. I sort of went off-track to your question, but I do think it's, it's a fluid environment, masking optional. I also think that from this point forward, we're going to see people wearing more masks. We might see more people wear masks during the cold and flu season, and it's common in other places of the world. So, I think there's changes that we know that it's changed our world in how people think about, you know, keeping themselves healthy in all types of circumstances.
And I don't know if we can, I don't think we can adjust, like you said, Mary Caitlin, the quarantine guidelines, you know, we can do what we can at the local level, hopefully, moving forward. But again, masks are optional, so I suppose if it was a family that, if they could not afford to have time away from work, maybe their child would have to wear a mask if that was something that would be an issue.
Yeah, that's an important consideration. And I would say the last one I was just thinking about is the roll up the cafeteria. So then we have everybody's unmasked, and there's groups of students, oh, jump in.
Yeah.
The meal thing.
I think, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no.
But I think it's a transition. That doesn't mean, I'm just making this up, if March 7th is the date that we're going to mask optional, that doesn't mean we're going back to sitting elbow to elbow, right? And I think, you know, that's part of fluidly transitioning back, making sure that, you know what, if we do have a mask option policy, how is that rolling out? So, I think that there won't be a significant turning it on or turning it off. It does mean we will transition. That doesn't mean in May it won't happen, because we've been living with it, and we understand it, and, you know, things are okay. But I think our community has said in their, in the survey, that dipping our toe in and then moving along incrementally is wise.
I think that's the important thing to continue to stress, is that this is an incremental change, and we can't just, you know, end one thing and go to the next.
Yeah, I didn't-
Can you cycle back to the slide that talked about the rates over time?
Which one?
The rates over time, go ahead, Mark.
Talk about the infection rate per month?
Oh, the school infection. You had a different chart. I'm sorry, I have a couple of things open. Yeah, I'm sorry, I appreciate the effort here on this one. So, want me to explain this one?
No, I, well, go ahead.
Well, I think this speaks to what we've seen and what we've experienced in Monroe County, and particularly in Fairport. We have approximately just over 5,000 students. You'll see in September where we started out, you know, a higher infection rate, and then through the year, through the year. In December and January, where it spiked, this is just at Brooks Hill, and now it's at .5% of a percent, right? So, I mean, the infection rate has gone down, this is students and staff. District-wide, you see the trend, and again, this is the whole district, using actual attendance rates, you know, where we started in September to where we ended up just as of February 7th, right? You know, .67 of a percent. So, that's an incredible reassuring trend, right? And I think that's what the governor was speaking to, and we're just seeing numbers. I think, Dr. White, you requested this information. Thank you.
So, what I would suggest is that as we modify the policy, we modify a policy, and I think we've seen models that you've sent us today that were condition-based policies, based on different metrics that the, the community, or the government, or the district is studying in terms of infection rate, vaccination rate, hospitalization rate, but it's a condition-based policy that allows adjustment both out of masking or back into masking, because if you look at the rate of change, it was rapidly changing to the negative side as well, right? So we just need to build a policy that allows the district to modify our policies with that same level of fluid decision-making.
The board has said frequently that you're going to review the policy, so that's exactly what you had intended to do.
So tying what we're seeing now, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joyce.
I was just going to say with the, in keeping with what Mary Caitlin started, the logistics and the questions of optional, I think, are many. Will, you know, at the cafeteria, when they take their masks off and they eat, they have to be three feet apart. Will that have to be still the condition in the classroom? Will they, so, and then when they're going to do a group thing around the table, do they have to put their masks back on? Because they are elbow to elbow, we've seen it in classrooms, that's what they're doing. All of those kinds of things, will the family be able to say, okay, if I don't want my child whose health is compromised, or for whatever reason, to be seated next to someone without a mask, how are we going to handle all of those questions? And there's a lot to be done. I'm glad that the governor has given us a few weeks before we know that this- I'm glad that the governor has given us a few weeks before we know that this may hit us, but I think there's a lot to work out.
I'm glad you didn't want an answer today.
No, I don't expect an answer.
And I think we've heard...
Expect you to figure it out, though.
And I don't doubt that we'll hear from, and I'm sure schools will hear from, specific people that have concerns or strong opinions. Joyce, I know we already have on all sorts of things, so it'll be a challenge.
Right, and will the teachers, again, have to say, oh, you can't sit there, or you have to move apart from her because, you know, this and that? And especially with younger kids. Obviously, older kids, as you say, it's a family thing. Your kids are older, you can tell them what to do and not to do.
They might not listen to me, but I try.
Little kids are a different...
But to your point, though, if I'm in a situation where I'm immunocompromised and I'm an educator, even a student, or if my son was in a situation, I would say, distance yourself. Make sure that, you know, you're masked and you're distanced, being able to manage it, and then understanding how that works in the actual fluidity of an environment. That's where the trick is. But I do see us, you know, I see staff for all the right reasons, and they're good reasons, and we have to respect it, that they will remain masked. I know that some students will. I've talked to several parents on this very topic, that they're not ready to do that, and we have to work hard to, like you said, Joyce, have an answer for that.
Brett, in your conversations with, or listening to the governor, conversations with health officials, do you have, have you gotten any kind of sense what metrics they're getting? I know what metrics they're looking at, right? Infection rate, positive case in the school, all of that. What are the benchmarks they're looking for? Like, what? I understand, I think a lot, you know, that's a question I get a lot from parents, is when? Like, we know what the numbers we're looking for, but what is the general idea of what number does it have to be before we're there?
That's a great question, and, you know, I know that that's been a conversation. We want numbers, we want to have a firm understanding. But the fact of the matter is, we don't have the same denominator that we had in the past. We don't have accurate measurements, because some people are reporting, right, for whatever reason, right? So they're more concerned about hospitalization rate, and I don't have like an exact number on that, but the infection rate is not as important as it used to be. That's what we've learned. I think people are feeling more comfortable with the variants, people being our medical experts that I talk to, that this is becoming more flu-like and pandemic-like, which is not always comforting, but it's a progression. And as you talk about endemic versus a pandemic, I think that...
It's more people, you could get sick, but you're mostly, you're not going to die.
And I... But I say that, and I hear, anytime I hear that, it's if you're vaccinated, right? So, I mean, that's not me saying that. That's when you talk to medical professionals, they speak to the efficacy of the vaccination. If you are not vaccinated, that's your choice, and, you know, you know, there's percentages relative to the impact of COVID.
Well, and that's, we probably do need to transition some onto what some of the medical advisors who are advising us have, and you have just informal notes from that. But it links to that, sorry, the sheet you had by school, because one of the things on there was infection rate, but I hear what you're saying, and I had to think about that with the governor's comments today as well. So 0.67 is well below what, you know, if that's the rate, then that's... Yeah, it is for one week. I understand that. But I'm just saying, if that's the type of thing continues, that's an enviable rate, and that's one of the benchmarks they said we could potentially use, as well as then looking at the community. And I find it interesting that at least they have it different, you know, below 1% to 2% in schools, but below 5% in the community. But how, you just mentioned it, because that becomes a challenge in listening to Governor Hokel, the take-home tests, you know, reporting, right? I mean, the denominator, the numerators, all these things are changing in influx.
And I think that's why it can't be used.
More trackable, which is then hospitalization rates, but then, you know, does that impact us as much or not as a school, community?
One thing I know is that what we knew last week when we were talking about metrics, honestly, I mean...
Yeah, it's changed. Yeah.
It changes. I mean, where we were looking for, give me an infection rate, give me an infection rate, and then I'm learning that we don't care about infection rates as much anymore for the reasons we just discussed. So it's hard to, and I think that's why there's wisdom in understanding this pathway to levels of normalcy and optional masking, because we will know more after February break, and we'll be able to be prepared, as Ms. Kastik has asked us to be over the next several weeks.
And that is soon, actually, which, February break is, we have one more week after this, and then it is break, so it's not that far away.
One of the things to keep in mind is that the goals of all this is to keep schools open and keep kids in school, right? So infection rate doesn't necessarily equate to death rate or hospitalization rate. It just means you're infected and now you're quarantined, you're not in school, right? So if a child gets infected, are they out of school for five days? Are they out of school for 10 days? If a child's out of school for five or 10 days, that has an impact on their learning.
You throw in test to stay in there as well?
Right.
Which speaks to vaccinated individuals or non-vaccinated individuals who are asymptomatic.
My only point is that an outbreak of infections isn't necessarily equating to death or hospitalization, but it's equating to learning, right? Because those children can't be in school if they're at home. So we want to keep the infection rate as low as possible for a number of reasons.
But it's also, I don't want to say but, but and, it's just like the flu. And I think that's what I keep hearing, and that's why I'm sort of like, okay, well, if medical professionals are talking about the flu, and there's a vaccination for the flu as well, you know, we don't jump to masking if there's a flu. We don't shut down schools if there's a flu. We've never done that. So that's what I'm hearing, and that's how it changes and evolves over time.
So will we be able to continue with the supplies for the PCR clinic that we have and test to stay?
Again, that's why we need multiple weeks to build our inventory, yes. How we distribute the tests, access to staff as well is critically important. I just filled out a survey today. I didn't send it to you, Matt. Thanks for doing all that throughout this pandemic. But, you know, they asked, you know, do we need more tests for staff? And 100%. Right now, there's a supply shortage, so we're building that and making sure that we have access to tests so we can give the staff, excuse me, students, and of course, our staff, 100%. And our PCR clinic will continue. Our masking orders, inventory needs to continue to grow, because you can't use the same mask. Matt, you trying to say something? Mr. Stevens?
I just wanted to add, BOCES 2 actually has been looking out, reaching out to districts to organize a bid for test kits to see what districts be interested participating, so trying to get ahead of that as well.
Does that happen overnight?
No.
Right. So, again, I don't mean to just throw that up to you, but I think that speaks to the wisdom of a pathway to optional masking.
We heard from, in the staff meeting, budget meeting about PPAE, specifically NK-95 masks and our ability to keep those in stock.
Yeah, I mean, it's a commodity. We have orders in place, as Mr. Stevens was just saying. But I think the thing that concerned me, and it's real, is like, they need to be well-fitting, right? They just can't be masks, and go ahead, and so I took copious notes on, and that was great advice from Ron Rutherford.
Yeah. Well, just looking down the medical notes, are there any other areas in there people want to review or discuss?
I just, I know we did try to reach out, and Erica probably can speak to this a little more, speaking out to experts who could talk about the mental health aspect, especially of continued masking for kids, and social-emotional stuff like that, and I don't know if we heard back from anybody.
I think people are in a hard place. They don't want to go on public comment. I don't know, voicing feelings, being nervous that they might be looked upon negatively from some of their peers. So it has been a challenge, and it's hard because, you know, it's changing so much as well, so.
So that was the challenging part. It seems to be a national concern for, we don't get that luxury, right? To not go on record, but yeah, there's getting people here to be official, but behind the scenes, providing guidance, yes. We have, but not to come to a meeting.
But we do have guidance from our pediatrician, so I think that's a big piece for us to be looking at, because this is a trusted medical professional. And when it comes to the vaccines, her recommendation is not just vaccinated, but boosted as well.
And at 80%, right?
And then, so that's a climb for us at this point, but I hope that will happen. If so many have one shot, I think they'll be going for the second one.
I was able to speak to our school doctor today, and she feels very comfortable with the off-ramp that has been provided and understanding of, you know, vaccination rates, infection rates, and how it impacts our community. So, you know, I mean, we are in constant contact. And again, we do meet weekly with Dr. Mendoza, who's not like an enforcement body, but he does provide his medical advice, and that's what he's hired to do.
So this is too generic, I suppose, the way, what I'm about to say, because I know, as I mentioned at start, we've received a lot, we've shared it in between us, we've received others from outside as well, links to this, links to that. But this is the time, I think, before we go into what do we want, and I'm writing down some elements, and we may be consistent in terms of what we want in our policy, elements of the policy, but I'm not sure what the word is, study, documents, ideas. We had a sample policy provided to us, you know? Where do people want to go with that? The Marty document for, I said, sorry, Marty, you get the credit for it, but three other doctors wrote it, right?
I'll tell you the truth, that document came when I asked a physician for an opinion, and then they shared the article with us, which I thought was a good summary.
It was a good summary, and at least it provided ideas as well, as here's a way to go about going to mask optional and finding whether it's being successful or not. Again, I did, I highlighted several things, but in there was where they pointed out, even if it's mild, a child will be quarantined, and therefore, you're not being successful, even if your schools are open, but for those children who end up being quarantined if your infection rate spikes. So it gave some ideas, and it was good for the idea generation.
I also appreciated that it took into account staff and staff attendance or absenteeism as one of the metrics.
Yeah, indeed.
We found that out with our bus driving situation this past winter, or this whole school year, and of course, staff, when we were in that January spike, as you could see, look at all of our percentages. That's what our schools looked like, the percentage rate in January. I mean, so that really hit us, so point well taken, Marty.
That was a huge hit. Okay, not hearing anything. We've read, I guess, the different things and highlighted. Here's what I've written down, then, in terms of potential policy. Damon, you had mentioned condition-based. So what conditions, right? What are we going to use if we're not confident on the infection rate anymore? But that's a question. Strategies to keep youth in school, what are those? So the PCR testing, test to stay, other things that were done. Who do we look for for guidance? Those are the three elements I've written down. Others, what are elements we think need to be in a policy? And maybe those three don't have to be, but those are what I wrote down as I was listening to each of you.
Just other variables that I read about, that I don't, I'm not saying need to be in our policy, but things for us to think about are policies around communal areas, or different, you know, children in a, you know, auditorium setting, gym setting.
Congregating areas.
Congregating areas, right. And then age-based, are we going to have one policy, K through 12, or different policies based on different ages of the kids and staff?
Yeah, I'm definitely not hearing that as in the tea leaves, but as we move along, and that's why two weeks, you know, we're going to be getting a guidance document from the Department of Health that will help us translate whatever best practices are, but yes, it could be all that.
And I think regulations also would come into play. So in terms of the policy, you know, we know we need to make some adjustments so that it's flexible, so that it can be interpreted or used accordingly with the changes, but those regulations would also come into play. So I think some of that, Joyce, correct me if I'm wrong, would probably come into play with that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think definitely that, I mean, that's how policy works. We write a policy, and then Brett writes regulations. You know, we say what has to happen, he figures out how and gets it to happen.
And Joyce saying it better than I ever could. I think that's one of the points I was making in some of our internal discussions on Monday night, talking, is that the regulate, that a lot of those, the points that Peter and Damon point out in terms of data points, data sources on that, to me, that feels more like regulations, and I don't want to get caught too much in a semantic debate, because...
And we can't come back every day and adjust our policy.
For a policy, but regulations, the policy should give that flexibility, and the regulations...
And when we wrote the policy, remember, this was, gosh, it was pretty new. I think it was right before we went back, right? I mean, it was very different in terms of the situation and the unknowns with COVID. So I think that's why we had it be so specific, whereas now, I think some of those specific things could be more in the regulations. It's been in place for what? Gosh.
I'm ready.
So that is the question of how broad, how narrow, right? How prescribed the policy is. I think we're all in agreement, we don't want to go that route because that will hamstring that will, our administrative team. So what are those elements? So who do we look to, right? As this unfolds, I think it becomes clear, and generally, we've not been in favor and advocated for, over the years, even at the state level, that a one-size-fits-all means one-size-fits-nobody, right? That doesn't work, so I look forward when it can be relinquished here locally, so we can have it fit for our community. And, but what is it then that will be our guideposts, or that we want the administration to look to as our guideposts? Not prescribing the range or whatever, but are, you know, the guideposts, is it...
I'm talking too much, I'm sorry. I feel like this would be a, why it should be general, because as, you know, we learned today, infection rates would have been what we've been writing all up until now, but now we learn hospitalization rate is being seen as more important. And so kind of all avail, you know, some kind of wording of like, all available data, you know, best of, most updated data, these words are not, should not be in the policy, but that's a general idea of...
Yeah, I mean, we're charged, I'm charged, with the health, safety, and welfare of our students and staff. And I feel very confident that our team will be able to regulate a policy based upon what our experts are recommending and saying. And as Governor Hokel said today, you know, there is a change. The mask mandate is now going to be ending for all public facilities and businesses. So I'm using discretion, at their discretion, using the data that they have. That will only evolve, and we'll learn more for our schools. And the reason why it was left in schools is because schools are congregant settings. We have students interacting with each other in very healthy, engaging ways. We need to make sure, again, as we move through this, we're thoughtful, being methodical in our approach, consulting with experts. Again, I will not make this decision on my own, but we do have a good sense of what's, what our community thinks is important. Back to the survey, we're well-connected with our medical experts that we have at hand as well.
I don't know, is it the guiding question then? Because it's a two-thirds, one-third split, fairly consistent staff, community, to what can be done in the policy, and perhaps more importantly, in the regulations, to bring more of the one-third over to where they're comfortable under a masking option, because they feel like their needs are also being met.
My biggest fear, which is, I mean, this is how I'm wired too, is everyone will not be happy. Everyone will not feel comfortable, and we will work hard to try to meet everyone's needs, and the information is helpful. The metrics that we're learning about, and the guidance that we're learning about, is more important. I hope that makes sense. I mean, so we're going to be following those guidelines and metrics as we move along. The next couple of weeks, we'll be telling, we'll continue to communicate with our experts and put forth regulation that supports wellness, health, and well-being of our students and staff, and community in this instance.
On a more procedural point, so if the policy committee writes, comes up with a new draft of a policy...
I'm sure we'll look at it 85... I'm sure we'll look at it 85 times.
What's that?
No.
Yeah.
I'm being sarcastic.
Procedurally, do we, would we be able to enact that with a first reading on, at Tuesday's meeting?
We can do anything we like. So yes. We can't do anything we like, but yes.
I do.
If you want to make a motion for it, yeah.
So in theory, yes, in theory. Let's, let's, let's go with that.
The policy committee's meeting Friday. That's right.
That's a heavy lift.
I think the other really important thing, and I'm just trying to stay positive, you know, how, like you said, how can we, we're not going to make everybody happy, absolutely not. But how can we put things in place for folks that might be nervous? How could we stop the stigmatizing? I know there was talk of bullying. Evan Dawson was on, a couple of us heard that. You know, we don't want kids having conflict because of masks. You know, if you want to wear a mask and it's optional, great. It shouldn't be an issue if you don't and it's approved, that it can be optional. That's okay too. I just, I don't want to see the conflict that we're seeing all over our community continue. You're right. We're not going to keep everybody happy, but how can we move forward? Ensure that people that need to be safe are, but also have options for people that are comfortable moving forward. So just one of my, makes me sad.
May I? This is good news.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I'm, I'm an optimist and I'm excited about the progress and the trajectory of where this is headed. That doesn't mean, I've learned to say, that things won't change on a dime, but all indicators are pointing towards us moving forward, having a thoughtful process to enter into the next phase. So our infection rates, you know, we'll continue to monitor them in our community as well, how we understand how it's translating in our schools. So, good news.
Yeah, I think so too.
So for those who may not have seen the governors, just the timeframe that was outlined, if you want to review that. And then I think we will relinquish this to the policy committee for Friday. Review. But it was, we have.
School break.
I'm going to get there.
Right?
Yeah, I'll get there.
Yep.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Dates around these, if you recall them.
So I'm, I'm going to pause while Mr. Stevens helps me with the dates because he's really quick like this. But February break ends next Friday, which is February.
If you want, it starts.
It ends the 25th.
It starts.
Yep, the 18th.
Friday. So the 18th. So we'll be back a week later. So.
The 25th. Oh, well, back the 28th.
The 28th. And then the 28th, the governor said, and I think it's reasonable, that before kids come back to school on the 27th, 26th, test yourself, right? No, but before you enter school, right?
We don't want our rates to go up.
So you know, so you know if you've been infected or if you have, you know, infection. And then on the third or fourth day of in-school, you test yourself again. And that should give us a clear picture based upon attendance rates and so on and so forth. So then they will be making a decision. And she said it, these aren't my words, that, you know, on the 4th, they'll be collecting that data, sharing information and talking about a possible, possible, hopeful, May, March 7th, masking option policy. Those were her words, not my words.
All right. So we've been there before, though. That's what I wanted to emphasize for, for you, where we're charging you and the, well, from the policy committee, the timeframe is they will let us know on a Friday evening, probably, right? For something that impacts us Monday morning. That happens a lot. And so we want to, I know, but we want to be ready for that type of transition, should it come, the way we are hoping that it does.
Right. So we would need to have our policy in place, have some regulations and guidance. That's Brett's plan. And then that way, if we did hear on the 4th, we would be good to go on the 7th.
Right. That's our timeframe, which is from today, just over three weeks, three and a half weeks. We good? Policy committee's good? Okay. Any other questions? Then we will adjourn for about 25 minutes to the community budget form. Motion to adjourn? Brian, second, anyone? Marty, second? All in favor? No opposed, 7-0. Thank you all for coming.